That's nine oh three. I'd like to call the Tuesday, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, Papillion Budget Hearing to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Mungar. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Engberg.
Wait a minute. Well, wait a minute. I jumped too fast. I didn't realize one council member had stepped away. Want to finish the roll? Uh, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file? And the current copy of the Open Meetings Act is still posted by the door when you come in. We only have one item on the agenda. Uh, this process is actually established by state law and it changed just a few years ago. So if people have been following what we do and wonder why we're doing a separate meeting, uh, it was a requirement of the legislature for all of the cities, I think all governing bodies in Nebraska to have a separate budget hearing that is separately, uh, published. And so tonight is the public hearing on next year's budget. One of the requirements of the state laws, there's actually a presentation of the budget. Uh, we historically have done that anyway without the change in law. That was the cover letter that always went with the budget and effectively was the presentation. And so we didn't really change our processes other than to make sure we're in compliance. I'm gonna kind of walk through the letter. Um, partially, this is out on, on, we do record this on video, so the public will have it. Uh, but that letter is published with the agenda, so it isn't. It has been out in the public realm now for probably a couple, three weeks, uh, the budget. So nothing new will be presented. And I want to thank the council, uh, for the budget meetings ahead of this. Uh, it should be very consistent information from what you saw, what you heard in the, uh, budget meetings. And I want to thank all the staff for everything they did. But from the general fund perspective, the general fund primarily being property tax, sales tax, and then some of the fees from the master fee schedule, combined, our personnel costs, not surprisingly, are the major part of the budget. Seventy-three point four percent of the budget is personnel cost. Uh, working assumptions in here, uh, three percent wage increase is assumed, is proposed in the budget. That three percent is derived primarily from our three union agreements. We did, uh, multi-year agreements, and so those were already approved by the council. So that's in line with the approved agreements. And then the management exempt then would, uh, get that same. Health and dental insurance premiums, um, it's a little bit of a guess early on in the budget process because we don't necessarily have the bids back, but just knowing what goes on with healthcare, we always estimate high. Uh, and then if the actuals come in lower that additional, we'll just go to cash reserves. We'd rather estimate high, uh, than to estimate low and then be surprised with a big bill. So we assume, we're assuming a fifteen percent increase in health and dental. And that fifteen's in line with what we've done previously. Uh, workman's compensation, we're projecting a three percent increase and life and long-term disability is no increase. We also have in the budget this year, a, uh, funding for a wage comparability study. Uh, so we can go out and see what other municipalities of our size are paying for all of the wages. And part of that is, uh, uh, to get ready for union negotiations. We'll probably trade offers, if I remember the schedule, late next year, uh, we'll trade offer. So that'll be good information to have going into that. Uh, we can see where we can come out from a market perspective. Uh, we have, for many years, uh, as we've been growing, we've really been challenging staff to rethink how they do work. If somebody says, hey, we got too much of a workload, we just don't throw bodies at it. We said rethink how you do work. Is there best practices out there? Is there software we can buy, uh, to make us more efficient? So as we grow, it's not just people growth, but it's efficiencies. Uh, we've been doing that for a long time. Staff has been doing a great job. Uh, but we are to the point where we do know staff and, uh, departments are being stretched with the growth we have. Uh, so one of the big things in this budget is an investment in people. There is a proposal for nine full-time general fund-supported positions. Uh, not surprising with the growth, that'll be in the building department, a combination electrical inspector, uh, finance, CPA, government finances only getting more complex, uh, a staff engineer, a sworn training officer in the fire department, a maintenance worker in the parks department, a library tech specialist for the library, and then a new position which we haven't had before, but a purchasing and contract manager in administration. We think there's a lot of efficiencies to gain with centralizing some purchasing and contract management. Uh, and then also a signal technician for the streets. And then all of the departments would share a GIS technician. And so that's, uh, that's probably the biggest thing in the, in the budget is the nine general fund staff positions. Consistent with all of the prior years, public safety is our biggest general fund budget. Uh, police and fire, um, with the police department, we're gonna continue the strong relationship with the school district. And we also propose retaining the CLEA certification. There is a cost to CLEA, and again, we're one of the few agencies in the state of Nebraska that are CLEA certified. Prior to the last year, some people might have questioned the validity of that, but the national conversations around policing, I think people now look to Papillion as a model for policing. And we don't actually have to make many changes because we're already following national best practices. Uh, and so that will continue with CLEA. Uh, and then police will also have, uh, have some equipment and vehicle upgrades that were kind of halted during COVID when we weren't sure what revenues were gonna be. We put some things on hold, so we'll get those going again. In the fire department, um, the, remember that, um, operationally and budget-wise, it is the city of Papillion's fire department, fire and EMS, so it's our employees, our staffing, our cost. But then we have two funding partners, the city of La Vista and the Papillion Rural Fire District. And those two partners will actually fund fifty-eight point seven percent of our fire, uh, department budget. Fees will cover about eight point five percent, and then the rest will be our general fund expense. Um, biggest thing in the fire department, besides that one, uh, training position that's all added, was software and then some rescue training upgrades. The, and I'll talk about fire again in a little bit, about a fifth station. Um, this will be the fourth year in a row, from a streets perspective, that we've made a major investment. Remember, from a streets perspective, general maintenance of the inside city, we used to budget at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, I've heard loud and clear from several council members that wasn't enough. So we doubled it thinking we were doing well, and we moved it up to five hundred thousand. And we still heard from council that wasn't enough. And then the question became, well, how do you know how much is enough? So four years ago, you approved the data plan where we mapped all of the streets with the GIS and sonar technology. And so we knew the condition of every lane mile in the city. And so that was done four years ago, and once we had that real data, then we quadrupled the budget for repair to two point two million dollars. And that's the work that's now being done, where you see the street being ground down, the concrete repaired, and then that U-Boss, the bonding agent of the asphalt going over to seal it. Uh, so we've done that for two years now. I think Mr. Thompson said it's, uh, performing well through the, through the winter we've had so far. And so this budget does propose doing that again. Um, it'll be a little bit higher than the two point two million, but that's just because of the inflation. It's, we're sitting at about two point three now. So we have that proposed again, and when we do that next year, that'll be the third year of that plan. Um, and then in addition to that, we still have two hundred thousand dollars set aside just for general in-city street repair and pothole for the things that come up. Um, that number is fairly consistent with what we've always had. And then everything in streets, the two point, the two point three million and the two and, and the two hundred thousand, that all is funded by current cash reserves. There is no debt, um, for that project. So that is fully funded. In addition to the pavement management plan, the two point three, which is part of the capital improvement plan, we've got another one point six million in additional capital improvement plans. Uh, some of the things that, the big items in there are lighting Blondie Rough, uh, volunteer field, uh, refurbishment of Schwer Park splash pad, um, some traffic, traffic signal upgrades, continuing some of the chan, channel stabilization projects that engineering has been doing. A signal timing study for Seventy Second and Cornhusker. And then, um, based on the one and six-year road plan that was approved, it, the budget does account for the initial design of those extensions. And then in addition to that, uh, the city through the federal government with the COVID has received two, uh, different sets of funding. One is the CARES Act, and a million of the CARES Act will be transferred into CIP to help with our future share of the Sixth Street widening project. And you heard a little bit about that tonight, even in the public testimony. So we reserve some of that money for that infrastructure project. And again, all of the CIP projects are scheduled to be paid without any financing. So they are all cash funded, so we're not adding to debt for the CIP projects. The percentage of our total property tax levy that goes to the bond fund is about twenty-three point nine percent. And that's been coming down every year. We've, we've talked, uh, the last eight years about weaning away from debt and getting more of the levy to general operations. We've made significant progress on that. And the outstanding debt, um, the bond fund is fully funded. The reserve funds that need to be there are there. And we do propose one refunding, uh, bond, again, for the interest savings. There's one more that's eligible to be called, and so we'll plan for that. And just like we do every other year, if the market conditions are right, um, throughout the year, we'll do some other refundings, but we don't anticipate any, uh, but we'll continue to watch for that. And we believe, we currently have our investment-grade rating from Moody's at AA1. And at least from everything we see, we don't see anything in the budget jeopardizing that. Some other items, the recreation fund, which is a lot of this complex, uh, that we had approved. Uh, the recreation department, we had a lot of discussion in the budget, uh, that even if we did not have this complex, we still do recreation programming. So this budget does propose about a hundred and seventy thousand of general fund budget to be available to recreation department for programming that does not generate fees. Um, and that excludes staff. And then a portion of the recreation staff will be still allocated to the general fund. So the whole burden's not on this facility because we would have that staffing anyway if we didn't have this. So general fund, uh, does recognize that recreation is still a priority, and we'll fund that. The water and sewer funds are the proprietary funds, um, if, um, either for the public or do council members. About every four to five years, we do a rate study, um, to look at our infrastructure and our costs and our fixed and variable costs and understand where our rates should be. And we vote that in, and then that sets the rates for the next three, four, five years. And so this budget does operate under the existing rate study, and everything is fully funded. Uh, there are three additional water operators proposed in this that will be funded by the water sewer fund, well, by the water fund. And what that's gonna do is give us twenty-four hour coverage during peak usage. And then when that, we don't need the twenty-four hour, uh, they can be working on line maintenance, uh, water line maintenance. And so those three positions are not general fund funded. They are funded by the water fund. And then there's also an upgrade to one of the booster stations proposed as well. And then in the sewer fund, um, it's included a relining project and then the replacement of some of the aging, uh, equipment. And then the water and sewer fund, Moody's, uh, rates that separately. And we still have an investment-grade rating that's in AA two. And we don't anticipate any changes to that either. Um, so that's fully funded, uh, with no re, and we'll just follow the rate increases that were already approved. The golf fund, uh, proprietary as well, based on the fees generated from the course. Um, there is, golf is getting the addition of one clubhouse food and beverage manager. Um, the course, both courses have had a lot of growth, and so those positions will be added. And, uh, I believe that'll actually aid in some revenue. Uh, the golf ad hoc committee, which is four council members, has met several times with golf, uh, about, uh, capital needs there. Uh, Rob is doing a fantastic job at the golf course. And, um, that, of course, has not been, uh, supplemented by property tax for a long time. In fact, he's been adding to the cash reserves. And so there's a million dollars in golf cash reserves that are going to be, uh, proposed to be used for long-term golf capital improvements. Um, Rob is working on what those, what the appropriate, uh, use of that funds are. And so the budget allocates the dollars to be used. It does not allocate, does not identify the specific projects. Rob will come back to the golf ad hoc committee for how to use those dollars. So the golf ad hoc committee will be used, be, uh, will be a part of that. Um, the half-set sales tax that the voters approved for, uh, this facility. Uh, remember the ballot question, uh, that was approved, that half sent must be dedicated to parks and recreation to include a community center, so we can't use it for anything else. Um, the major portion of that is the bond payment on this facility. So the budget does call for that to be fully funded. And there's a cash reserve fund that, uh, needs to be funded at Pearl Policy that the council adopted. The budget fully funds that reserve. After the bond payment and after the reserve, there is still about seven hundred thousand dollars available to be allocated. And so we recently approved the park master plan. And one of the major items in the park master plan was some natural play areas. And then it also graded each of the neighborhood parks. And so that's seven hundred thousand we are gonna dedicate to natural play. And then neighborhood parks is where you'll see that going. Um, anything related to natural play will come back before you. Um, but that's what that seven hundred thousand is. The community betterment fund is a proprietary fund, which is the Keno dollar. So, uh, the city's, the city's revenue from Keno goes into the community betterment fund. That is a restricted fund. It can only be used for community betterment projects, can't be used for general operations. Um, some of the things that'll be proposed in there is, uh, expanding our community banners. Um, talking about a, uh, flag project on Highway three seventy within city limits, so American flags on there. Uh, Bellevue's talking about that a little bit. Gretna's doing some of that. So I think what you'd see is in Sarpy County, three, Highway three seventy becomes a pretty special corridor. Um, Veterans Park, talking about a small POW MIA KIA memorial, and that'll probably finish a lot of that circular part, uh, Veterans Park. And then, um, we're getting a few more historical structures, and we have partnerships, Sauter House, Portall, the Boy Scout Cabin. Um, and we're always asked a little bit to help out with those a little bit. We've usually helped out through the neighborhood grant program. Um, instead of maybe tapping the neighborhood grant, we'll use a little bit of community betterment for that. Um, and then a feasibility study for some other recreational opportunities. And then lastly, a, uh, an additional restroom at Walnut Creek Recreation Area up around the area where the, uh, Vietnam Veterans Memorial is. Now, we won't do that project until they fully raise their funds, but we'll allocate the dollars for that part of that project. So that's community betterment. Um, COVID nineteen again, so back to the federal dollars. There's two batches of money. One is the CARES Act and one is the ARPA. CARES is the Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Act. That was the first one that was passed. Um, we get about one point three million dollars of that. Uh, ninety thousand of that was used for some upgrades in the police department for equipment and technology that was already expended under the current year budget. Um, and then I mentioned earlier, we're gonna transfer about a million dollars into the CIP fund for some infrastructure, and that will be for our Sixth Street widening project. And in addition to that, there's, that leaves about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. We have not allocated that to a sp, a specific project, so the budget's gonna recognize receiving the two-ten, but it doesn't authorize where that goes. So if we win and if that is used, that'll come back before you through a budget amendment. Um, so that'll go into cash reserves. The city also got about one point seven dot million in CARES Act that is, uh, dedicated to the fire department. Um, if you look at the MFO financials, the MFO is the partnership of the three organizations, La Vista, Papillion, and Rural Fire. And if you look at the balance sheet of the MFO, you'll see a million seven sitting over there. And that was the receipt of the CARES Act. Um, believing that will probably be used as seed money to build a fifth fire station. Uh, with the growth out west, we know at some point we'll need a station. Um, council had been updated that we were looking, actively looking for that site so we didn't lose, uh, an opportunity as land is getting developed out there. And the MFO through Chief Bose has, uh, approved using a two-acre site, a Prairie Queen, that we already own. So, um, it'll, if we move forward, it still has to come to you for a vote, but we have identified a site for Station Five. It's just a little premature to build it, but we do have the one point seven we'll reserve in seed money for that project. Um, so the budget accounts for allocating those dollars. The ARPA, which is the second round of money, uh, that's about three point six million dollars. We'll get that in two phases. We've received part of it. There's a lot more restrictions on the ARPA funds of how it can be used and not used. Um, some of it is for revenue replacement. Uh, if you lost revenue during COVID, it's to replace some of that. We're in a real unique spot because of all of the development we've got with the data centers and the industrial buildings out there. Uh, some of our sales tax is actually above, but most of that sales tax, we know is gonna have to be rebated through the state's program. So if we could factor in how much we think is gonna be rebated, we actually may have a revenue loss. Um, but the books actually show a revenue gain because we haven't rebated it yet. And the federal government doesn't recognize that. So we're in kind of a weird spot of how we can use this money, and staff is still learning a little bit. So what you're gonna see in the budget is, uh, showing the receipt of the three point six million dollars, but we don't have any projects specifically proposed. So again, at the point we want to spend that money, we'll have to come back to you through a budget amendment. Where it looks like we can use those monies is in, uh, we know we can use it in water and sewer infrastructure projects. So that's probably where it will go is into sewer and water infrastructure projects. But the budget is not approving that use. It's just showing the receipt. Um, so again, you'll see future budget amendments on the ARPA, um, dollars. Um, couple of last items. Um, so that's expenditures, general fund, the proprietary funds. Uh, on the revenue side, um, sales tax again is our largest revenue source. It's thirty-five percent of our revenue. And what we're projecting on sales tax, and it's the practices we've been having about the last eight years, we project very conservatively on sales tax increases. So the budget's anticipating a two percent increase in sales tax for next year and a one percent this year. Uh, our common practice has been not to budget high and then find out we have a shortfall. Let's budget conservatively, and then if mid-year receipts are actually higher and we're sitting on more cash reserves actually in hand, that's when we come back with a budget amendment. So we're gonna stay with that practice. That's, that serves us very well. Um, property tax, um, is, uh, Papillion for a, for a large, number of years, at least five, has had the lowest, uh, city property tax of all municipalities at Douglas and Sarpy County. Um, we haven't seen everybody's, but we believe that will still be the case. And the levy is actually being proposed to be lowered two percent, uh, to forty-four cents. And with that, um, the assessments obviously are up, but a vast majority of that is tied to new growth and development that we have seen. We also believe that with, um, the last annexation we did and some of the large projects that are being done in that area, we'll see probably a bigger bump in the assessments next year. And then also, the other thing on the revenue is with sales tax, it's still a little bit of a wild card to understand how much sales tax are we getting from online purchases? Because that was new. Legislature just passed that. So we've only had about a year's experience with that. So we think one more budget cycle, we might start to having a handle on how much sales tax is coming from online. So next year's budget will be quite, probably, uh, we'll have some more intelligence between the, um, Amazon building coming in online with property tax and then understanding the online sales tax. So we're staying conservative for this year. Um. Mr. Glover. Can you turn your microphone on? That's a very interesting question. Um, if you didn't hear, and you want to know who monitors sales tax from the online, let me start with, we get one check from the state of Nebraska for our entire sales tax with zero backup documentation. The state will not tell us where our sales tax comes from. So we can't go to the Department of Revenue and say, tell us how much is coming from online, how much is coming from physical, of the physical, how much is gonna be rebated? They refuse to tell us. Um, and we've been trying to work with the legislature to change that. Uh, we've made some minor progress, but it's taken us literally probably seven years to even get permission to go down and even look at a computer to understand it. Uh, but even the person that goes down can't come back and tell us what they saw. Uh, it's, there's some goofy rules, and it's driven, the state's guy is highly concerned about confidentiality. And they say it will jeopardize some business relationships, but we don't believe that because other states do share it. So it's, it's a fight we're having with the state. So with that being said, um, we started Nancy six years ago, five years ago, at least, attempting to do some rudimentary modeling on our side. The initial idea was when we get the monthly check from sales tax, if we can track that every single month, year over year, um, if all of a sudden we have a spike in sales tax, we know that's an anomaly without the state telling us. And so prior to online sales, our assumption was that spike was probably one of the big companies making a big purchase. If they made a big purchase, they're probably gonna call for a rebate two or three years from now. And so Nancy has built a formula, um, to track those, those variations and those spikes. And when we see those spikes, reserve that money. So when we, they do call for their rebate, we have the money to pay them. And there is no science behind it. It's just, uh, her doing a lot of analytics. And so we owe Nancy a huge debt of gratitude for that. But to your question then, when online sales tax came on, people start buying online. We saw a spike, but that's also now the same time that Facebook was building, Google was building, Amazon was building. So the spike we saw, is it from online or is it from the rebateable program? We're flying blind, but Nancy's doing a massive amount of work to try to understand that. Um, only time will tell us, I think, uh, how much of that is ours versus how much is to be rebated. So not a good answer, other than we're very thankful for Nancy. Um, and she needs some staff help, so we're authorizing a CPA in this project as well. Um, and we continue, it's a very active conversation with the United Cities of Sarpy County. And we're continually trying to educate our senators on this issue, trying to get legislative changes, uh, to force the, uh, Department of Revenue to give us more information. Uh, but we got a good relationship with the city of Omaha and some of the out-states, uh, state, uh, cities as well because we all have the same issue, and so we're all working the legislature on that. Um, from a cash perspective, um, the total budget's about seventy-seven point four million dollars. Of that, about forty-nine point three million is the operating budget, seven point eight is the capital improvement, uh, one point eight is other capital, thirteen point four is debt service, and about five million is various transfers. Of the twelve point five million that is our property tax ask, um, about nine point five of that is for general operations and two point nine eight goes to the bond fund, uh, to service our bonds. And then the state, uh, legislatures also put limits on us of how much levy we can have and how much authority can we have. And so we actually have some unused authority of about two point three nine. So if some crisis would occur, um, there is some ability to raise property taxes if we needed it. Um, not that I think there's the appetite to do that. We're not proposing that. But that actually plays well into our Moody's rating. When Moody's rates us from a bonding perspective, just the ability that in an emergency we have the ability to raise some property tax weighs very heavily positive. And it's one of the reasons that we have an investment-grade rating is because we do have that unused authority. As opposed to some cities who are at their maximum levy, they don't have that ability. They're actually downgraded, uh, because they don't have that. Um, so managing the levy is, is an important component. In our cash reserves, we have, we'll have about a one hundred and eighteen million dollars in cash reserves. Of that, about a hundred and three million is in special reserves, so proprietary funds and all of those types of things and carryovers. It's about fifteen and, uh, point two five million is then unrestricted. And if you remember, I think it was six years ago, you approved a cash reserve policy. Uh, it says, when do we not have enough, uh, reserve and when do we have too much reserve? And then what do we do in those situations? And under that reserve policy, that fifteen point two five equates to about a twenty-four percent reserve, and that is within the policy. Uh, so we're still operating within the policy you approved. Um, just some thanks, Amber, Phil, uh, extremely strong leadership. We haven't missed a beat in the administration, uh, retirements and new folks coming in. Um, so appreciate everything you've done. Nancy, we can't say enough for everything you do. Uh, you'd be glad when this time of year is over, but it doesn't slow down. So thank you very much. Um, I tell people I think we have the best finance director in the state, um, so thank you. Um, council, uh, there's no question this community's growing extremely fast, but yet we still have the lowest property tax levy in the metro. Uh, we probably have one of the strongest financial conditions. Uh, we continue to lower our use of debt, which has been one of our goals. And we continue to have high level of service with effective management and growth and planning and additional staffing. So, uh, thank you for all of your leadership. So thank you for all of your leadership and the cooperation we have. And again, I can't say enough about that cash reserve policy that you passed back in 2010. It's because of that policy, and we've been operating under that. We've been staying consistent in the council retreats and the goals. That is the reason we navigated COVID. We'd always talked about, there's going to be a point in time, this growth isn't going to be there. And when we hit something, and I, I would have always assumed it would have been a recession, how do we not panic and we just keep doing what we're doing? Who would have known that it was a global pandemic? But that's really what happened, we just kept doing what we were doing because we had the policies in place and we were conservative on some of the things where we have ongoing costs. So thank you for that. And the budget being somewhat conservative on those projections, some of that's again purposeful with COVID in mind, what's winter going to hold? Are we going to have a repeat of what we did? We don't know. That could affect sales tax revenue and staffing and some other things. And I think that nobody's going to question, we're heading into a little bit of inflationary period in the national economy, so we're still trying to be very conservative in how we're planning. So that, that's in the budget. From a levy perspective, according to the last US Census Bureau information, we've got inside-city limits, the median householding house was about a hundred-and-eighty-nine, a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. So when you put that forty-four cent levy on that house, the revenue that the city's getting from property taxes, seventy dollars and eight cents a month. Everybody in those households pays more for their cell phone and their internet connection. And so for that, they're getting police services, fire services, highest-quality parks, great planning, zoning, everything we're getting. So you talk about value for the dollar, I think conversations about property taxes are always a valid conversation, and are they high in Nebraska? Yeah, but are people getting value for their dollar in Papillion? Absolutely, and I'll stand up all day long and say that seventy dollars are getting a lot of value. So again, thank you for your leadership on that. If you remember the retreat we had in 2020, we worked together, council came up with a mission statement, to preserve our small-town feel, promote quality of life while delivering exceptional services for our residents, visitors, and businesses, and to sustain an environment, physical, social, and economic, that people are proud to call home. And then you had, we reiterated and came up with a couple of new goals. And I think you will see that the budget was heavily guided by that mission statement and the goals you set in the 2020 plan. So I just want to thank you for your leadership, and that's the budget presentation. And this is a public hearing. Anybody want to speak in for or against? I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Glover, please vote.